Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum as present with Mr. Schuster absent. The next item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is public hearings. Just a note on public hearings, you did not need to sign up in advance to speak during a public hearing. We will limit speaking time to five minutes per person, and if you did not bring up a form prior to the meeting, I would just ask that you state your name and address when you are speaking for the public hearing. Also, if you came to speak for audience comments, that will be a little further on in the meeting, so if you just sit tight, we'll get to you in a few more items on our agenda. So first, we have the public hearing for the 2025 budget, and I did have a couple that people that brought me sheets, so we will start with Joyce Gal.
Good evening, everyone. My concern is, what are we going to do with two groups of people in our community for housing? In a recent article on WFDL news page, even Chief Goldstein had asked the question, where are the homeless going to go? Council voted to accept the safety code to move the homeless away from the downtown area, but it kind of seems like we're just kind of shuffling them around from one place to another without any forethought about where or how we will take care of them. There are increasing numbers of elderly women who are losing the security of their homes and apartments. In the past year at the Warming Shelter, there were 27 individuals who were over the age of 60. Seventeen were men, and 10 were women, and that is 10 too many and 17 too many. The maximum that a person ideally should be spending on their rent is 30%, and many of these women are paying, are spending 60%. Most of us are just one social security check away from insecure housing. The elders cannot stay in their rental units when the rental units raise the prices greatly. Let me give you an example. So a social security check of $250, $600 to $850 for an apartment, but then the rent goes up to $1,000. That leaves you, that leaves, ooh, me, $250 for food, transportation, medical, and whatnot per month. Remember, please, that this could be your grandmother, it could be your neighbor, it could be your aunt, it could be your mother, it could be your sister, it could be a friend, one social security check away. If a person wants to apply for subsidized housing, I found out that there's approximately a two-year wait, just even to get on that particular list. Several communities in the Fox Valley are using their ARPA funds to address the affordable housing, especially for the elderly residents. I don't believe Fond du Lac is. There are other ways that the city could start to address these two populations, including using some of the empty lots that could be provided with incentives, incentives, excuse me, for builders, maybe creating two or three houses on a lot for elderly housing. Right now, there are allocations in the budget for subdivisions and assistance for infrastructure for developers, but I don't see anything for the elderly. If the government goal of the city is to increase business opportunities, which I'm all for, then we need to show prospective investors and developers that we know how to take care of our more vulnerable population. We need to be able to show them that we have heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Timothy Lanari, followed by Donna Richards.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Tim Lanari. I'm speaking in support of increased funding for the development of affordable housing here in Fond du Lac. As president of the St. Vincent de Paul Holy Family Conference, and as a daily visitor with the homeless and those struggling with housing insecurity, we've evidenced this significant increase in homelessness and lack of affordable housing for our residents. Especially disturbing is when retired individuals or couples, or disabled vets, or young mothers with children are displaced due to unexpected financial hardships or increases in rent. What I am sharing here is verified by the recent Housing Study and Action Plan, which concluded that a third of the renters are cost burdened, meaning they're spending over 30% of income for rent, and 60% of seniors are cost burdened. So as the numbers of homeless have become greater and more visible here in Fond du Lac, the community is becoming more aware of this growing issue, but many still are unaware of its magnitude. At St. Vincent de Paul since January 1st, we've assisted 604 homeless in Fond du Lac. Both immediate and long-term solutions need to be addressed and funded, and we know this is an expensive endeavor, requiring collaboration with city, county, state, and private investment. So in the past year, the Holy Family Warming Shelter, which accommodated 30 guests for six winter months, was supported by several hundreds of thousands of dollars in community donations. Our St. Vincent de Paul Conference, which is only responsible for the city of Fond du Lac and village of North Fond du Lac, provided over $345,000 of support of basic daily needs, including eviction avoidance, prevention of utility shut-off, food insecurity, and more. So in addition to this, in addition, the St. Vincent de Paul Council, which is county, and Solutions Center each spent over half a million dollars in support of the St. Catherine Drexer Shelter, which temporarily houses 100 individuals, including children, and has a waiting list of just under 500. As a result of this, as a result of the increased request for assistance, our funds were actually used up, and we had to stop all monetary assistance as of September 1st. It's been stressful for our volunteers, knowing that residents in dire need are not able to get aid from us. We're pursuing additional funding sources in the hope of beginning aid soon, so we're working on that. But in seeking short- and long-term solutions for affordable housing, we must consider the well-being of the whole person, and this includes consideration of the physical health issues, the mental health addiction and addictions, and support systems. There are housing models to address these concerns. I've shared one of these holistic models with Diane Benson, Community Development Director. We're aware that these issues are being considered, and solutions are being sought in affordable housing, but we ask that also the affordable housing be included annually as a line item in the budget. We're confident that if these concerns are dealt with holistically, our community will experience lower costs in trivial emergency room use, fewer arrests, and less cost in jailing residents, fewer court appearances, and Fond du Lac will become an even more desired place for families to reside. So we want to thank Police Chief Aaron Goldstein, and the Fond du Lac Police Department, and especially Officer Brooke Mathis for their respectful treatment supporting the dignity of each individual in our community, and...
Thank you, but that's been five minutes. Sorry. Thank you. Next, we have Donna Richards, followed by Michael Ketterhagen.
Hi. I mostly have said what I wanted to say before, so I'm going to go back to my general budget discussion that I've said for several years now. For several years, we've had hardly any money to do anything extra, and when I say extra, these are what normal cities do, and some things that we've lost over the years. And so I was continuing to hope that when we got extra infusions of funding, that some of these services would be restored, or staffing would be developed to handle certain things. But in recognition of our homeless crisis right now, I think that's our first priority, and I would like to see, and I think we will see, as we see with these wonderful citizens here, the community uniting and gathering our resources together and really making something happen, and I hope it is routinely. The only other thing I want to say is that, yes, we still need bulky waste pickup, we still need to restore brush pickup, there's staffing that does not exist for sustainability, for parks programming, we don't even have a grant writer, we don't have a communications director, those are basic, basic city functions that are missing here, and hoping that with our continued increase in funding, which we got, you know, the revenue sharing as well as the county funding, that we can begin to actually designate some of those funds for particular uses year after year, and make sure that we get some of these services and individuals back up again. And I certainly hope that we have a very concerted effort to eliminate homelessness for the unhoused, which I think will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Ketterhagen.
First of all, I want to thank you all for being my representative. You're an important part of our city, and I'm really proud of the fact that you're putting in the effort and energy. I know that in my own mind, it's not easy, your position, and I want you to know that I recognize that and honor that, before I share with you some of my concerns. I'm here today to talk about some of the things that I think are missing from the city budget, and one in particular is the affordable housing for all the people that you represent. You're in a unique situation because each of you represents every citizen in Fond du Lac. Therefore, you are not representing just a portion of the city residents, you are representing not just the taxpaying people, but you are also representing everyone else. It's a double-edged sword. You represent the very wealthy and the very poor here in the city, and everyone in between. Your constituents are the ones that are quite influential and can get to you, and can get to your ear anytime they wish, and they are also those who are invisible and never make their voice known. Your constituents are the wealthy landowners, the landlords, the homeowners with large or no families, and those who have no homes at all, but wander the streets or even couch surf with their friends. Positively, this reality is a way for you to look at the well-being of all citizens. This is a double-edged sword. You are forced by your citizens, whether they like it or not, to represent the common good, the health and the well-being of everyone here in the city. Your position as a city councillor forces you to look at the whole picture of the city. You're forced to, whether you want to or not, to become a holistic thinker. Negatively, the reality means that because your job to represent every citizen in Fond du Lac, every individual, is so overwhelming that the movement of government is not fast. When it becomes fast, then you listen to only certain parts of the citizenry, the ones who speak the loudest at any given time. You are hearing a lot about housing for all right now, especially housing for the unhoused, the elders, the economically, emotionally, and mentally disturbed, namely, all the insecurity of housing going on in our present situation. Now, I'm well aware that this is not just our problem, this is a city, this is a state problem, a national problem, but there are some things that we as a city can do, and they are budgetary issues. There are many reasons for housing insecurity and homelessness, but the first step is to get people places to stay, where they're safe and they experience some dignity. We need more such affordable houses in Fond du Lac, and you as city councillors and citywide representatives need to take the lead on this. We elected you. First of all, there are two ways that I believe that you can really start to take the lead. Develop a city council agenda for the common, for the Continuum of Care group. Don't let the meeting get bogged down in each member sharing of what each representative of the members' group is doing. Rather, set an agenda item. Housing, the housing insecure and homeless, for example. Ask the representatives of the agency to write and send via email a report about each agency's work in reference to this agenda item. Then, the gathering members of the agencies would come together and discuss the following question. Knowing what we know about what everyone else is doing in the city for this situation, what are the goals of the Continuum of Care group for the next year? Those goals need to be set, otherwise we don't get anything done. This group then needs to agree on those goals and determine, if necessary, certain ad hoc committees to implement the goals. These ad hoc committees, in using the example of the homeless, must include the homeless and their, and/or their representatives. Homeless people are often very shy about talking to the public. And they must include the landlords, the business leaders, building developers, churches, besides the other people of expertise from the Continuum of Care group, and there are a lot of important agencies on that group. The second way is to include money, money in the budget for the planning that is needed, if it's not there already. I looked through it. I'm not a budget person. It was just like overwhelming for me just to look at all those numbers, but it needs to be something there. The budget money is necessary to actually plan to build affordable housing units for the people of Fond du Lac.
Thank you. That's been five minutes. I'm sorry.
Oh, shoot. Well, I gave you copies.
Yes.
You have all that stuff. I thought I might go over, but I didn't think I was going to go over that much.
Well, thank you. And Mr. Ketterhagen was the last person who I had signed up, but the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the 2025 budget? Oh, I see we have our Girl Scouts. You'll have to wait a little bit for public comment. We're still in the budget hearing. And if you could please just state your name and address before you speak.
I am Mary Ketterhagen. I live at 590 East 10th Street. I come as a citizen, as a Vincentian who works with people, who visits people who are low-income, who are insecure housing, and who are homeless. I come as a person of faith, who takes seriously the need to take care of the vulnerable. The housing study provided information on the housing gap in our community. It seems to me that if a person or persons who do not have a permanent structure with an address, then there is a gap in housing. Yet, there is no mention of the people in this exact situation within our community, namely, our homeless population. What we are doing is moving the homeless from one part of town to another without any plans for housing or a real solution to this part of the housing problem. We have created a NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard attitude. There is a problem, and we are not addressing the elephant in the room, if you will. We need to be willing to form a working committee with all interested parties involved, including representatives of city government, the housing authority, nonprofits, churches, businesses, landlords, and the homeless or their representatives, and all stakeholders in the increased homeless population problem. I have been made aware of the fact that there is a group called the Continuum of Care, already mentioned, that meets regularly, and basically, each agency's representatives shares what they're doing. However, I question whether there have been any decisions to actually deal with the homeless problem. Think about the safety code that was recently enacted by the council, by this council. The police chief applauds the safety code revision because it gives more resources to the police department, so the police have more resources to help the homeless. What resources are you, as our representatives, planning to put into the budget to allow the police to have more tools available to them to serve the homeless instead of just incarcerating them? There's a cost that will be incurred if those receiving citations lose their property, don't pay the fine, and end up in municipal court. The cost of incarceration is over $50 a day, which will be incurred by the taxpayers. Where do you want to put your dollars? In jail, or working to solve the issue? Thank you for your service to the community. Thank you for allowing this open hearing.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak on the 2025 budget? You can have a full five minutes for yourself, actually.
My name is Roseanne Colwell. My address is 110 East Cotton Street in Fond du Lac. Thank you for allowing me to finish what Mr. Ketterhagen started. The second way is to include money in the budget for the planning that is needed. It is not in the budget. The budget money is necessary to actually plan to build affordable housing units for people in Fond du Lac. After a wonderful, wonderful discussion with your city development director, I learned there are a number of different initiatives being taken or contemplated regarding actual physically providing housing for more people in Fond du Lac. Therefore, some action could take place in a relatively short period of time. Tiny houses is one. An ad hoc committee, which includes representation from the homeless themselves, the senior citizens of Fond du Lac, the landlords, building contractors, business leaders, Habitat for Humanity, and other NGOs, and representative members of the Continuum of Care group. Which model will be used? The Madison model, the Oshkosh model, the Fredrickton, New Brunswick, Canada model, or our own preference? Where will they be placed in the city? Land and infrastructure costs, and possibly the construction costs, need to be looked at and added to the budget. Educational sessions... Educational sessions need to be planned so that the proposed areas of the city where the houses with their intensity and out-of-order zoning need to be shared with the proposed neighbors. Place little houses in industrial areas that will become self-defeating, from my perspective. I'll repeat that. Placing little houses in industrial areas will become self-defeating, from my perspective. Zoning laws need to be changed so that additional domestic units, ADUs, can be built in the residential areas of the city, not just multiple-family or industrial or manufacturing areas. Also, budgetary money is needed for an affordable housing educator who would call together residents interested in placing such units in their neighborhoods. This will diminish the "not in my backyard" attitude. The vacant Blue Cross Blue Shield and the hometown baked building need to be considered strongly for housing. I have an alarm going off. I don't know if you can hear it or not. The idea of building a housing unit on the thieves', giddings', and Lewis parking lot is a poor idea, from my perspective, unless there is a first-floor grocery store. Modeled like the Aldi's grocery business plan, and it should sell, as Aldi's and the Village Market on the south end of Main Street does, high-quality organic foods and vegetables. Those types of foods are absolutely necessary for the health and well-being of our homeless or central-city poor folks. Thank you very much for listening to me and allowing me to finish my speech and for serving our Fond du Lac citizens. I encourage you to, more and more, push yourselves toward holistic thinking, especially because you are structured as a governing body in this way, unlike the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak on the 2025 budget? Asking an additional time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2025 budget? Could you please just state your name and address?
I can. Kevin Miller, 242 East Follett Street, Fond du Lac. As we talk about the plight of some of the homeless people in our community, I'll add one thought for you. Good in a court of law, so it should be good here. I'll quote something a very famous person said a long time ago. "Early I say unto thee, what ye do unto the least of these, ye do unto me." Jesus Christ did that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the 2025 budget? I'll ask again. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2025 budget? And for a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2025 budget? All right, before I close the public hearing, I would like to let council know that because the public hearing is noted on our agenda, we are allowed to discuss the budget at this time. And if you don't mind, I would like to kind of open up first to our city staff. Mr. Moore or Ms. Benson, would you like to possibly comment on some of the ways that our budget addresses housing or issues with the homeless?
One thing we hear and we know that affordable is not always affordable. And so, I think what we have seen this year is more often than we have in past years that there are people who cannot afford affordable housing. Right? So, as we're talking about that, I would, on one hand, tell you, and I know that you know this, but the public might not know this. We've got a number of affordable housing units that have come online or will soon, that are in the pipeline, that are quite well-funded. But that doesn't necessarily mean they're affordable for everyone. And that is one area that the housing study pointed out. And I think that the real struggle here is to find a solution for people who can't afford affordable housing. So, that's one thought that came to my mind as I was listening to the comments tonight and as we've seen what we've seen this year.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who wish to speak on anything regarding the budget at this time? Ms. Leering?
So, I just have a few things. For what you just said, Mr. Moore, I feel that a housing-first development would be something that we should consider in Fond du Lac because I feel like it would address the affordable housing that's not affordable. I think that's really important for us to consider. It also helps people get to the services they need and helps them, you know, get off their feet. So, if anybody isn't familiar with housing first, just Google it and you'll find information on it. The other thing is, again, is getting a place for people during the day because I understand, you know, we're the small-business owners coming from or having people on your doorstep, and it prevents, you know, people from coming to your business, and it affects their livelihood. But people also need a place to go. And I don't really see anything in our budget that really addresses that situation. I know that we have housing. You know, there's some things in the pipeline with housing, but we don't have a place for people to go during the day. So, we didn't... You know, I hear that we've criminalized homelessness in Fond du Lac, but we didn't. There was a change to a code about overnight camping. But I see it as, especially with the police chief we have and what's happening in our community, I feel like it's a point of contact, not situations where we want to incarcerate people, but we want to get them off the street. And it's hard to get people off the street unless we're able to say, "Hey, you know, you have an alcohol problem. Maybe you need treatment." Or, "You have a mental health problem. Let's get you into treatment." And so, it's better to try to get people off the street. And that's why I think the housing-first development would be good. It's not something in our budget, but it would be something to consider for next year. The housing situation is happening everywhere, and it's not overnight, but it seems like it because we have significant inflation that happened quickly. And that's, and we're kind of dealing with that all over the United States. And so, I know that they're working on it, and I'm glad that that's, you know, coming. But like I said, we really, really need something in our budget because this is... You know, what are we going to do to get people off the street during the day? And provide a place for them? So, I just wish we would have addressed that this year. I guess that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
I will just point out, our budget is not finalized, so... If you would wish to come up with an amendment to the budget, we still have time for that. Are there any other council members who wish to speak on the budget? Well, Mr. Moore, I would like to ask my fellow council members if perhaps... Because we heard so much tonight about, specifically about homelessness and the different ways that we might need to address it, I was wondering if my fellow council members would be interested in having perhaps a committee of the whole meeting before one of our upcoming council meetings, if that's possible?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
So, if I could just kind of gauge people's interest tonight? Up or down? Thank you. So, Mr. Moore, if we could possibly work on something with that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Brought, also, I think that you'll be pleased, and Ms. Lauren, you'll be pleased that during audience comment, I think you're going to hear from Advocap leadership about a new initiative in Advocap to provide what you were describing as a place to go during the day. I think there's a real potential there, and so, you're going to be hearing about that in a few minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, once again, I'll just check with our council to see if there's anybody else. But seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing on the budget closed. We will now move on to our public hearing on the 2025 transit budget. Is there anyone who is wishing to speak on the 2025 transit budget? I'll ask again. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the 2025 transit budget?
This is something that is an ongoing theme for me as well, and I think it's very doable. It's one of those... I would call it... Oh, Donna Richards.
Could you please guess?
121 North National Avenue.
Thank you.
The amount of fares that are collected are so minimal, and the buses run so empty so often that I think that, as a community, it is worth the effort to come together and say, "Oh, can we raise a quarter million dollars a year to run the buses for..." I wouldn't say free. I would say for a donation, whatever people want to or can afford, but get people that really need transportation, all the transportation that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the 2025 transit budget?
Joyce Kyle, 63 Heritage Lane. It came to my attention that, you know, we don't have any bus service really late. And many of the factory workers, for example, when they're hired, are oftentimes put on the second shift or the third shift. And I was just wondering if there's ever been a consideration of running one bus at a couple of general pickup points for that second shift ending in order to have people be employed and have a way of getting home without having a taxi or something? Thank you.
Roseanne Colwell, 110 East Cotton. I have to agree with Donna in regards to being able to do something with... We have such empty buses. Why not be able to open that up to people? Again, there are several homeless people, people that are trying to get to medical appointments that are low-income, or homeless people that are trying to get to interviews that they could do that really could benefit from being able to utilize a bus transit if they... Especially if they don't have the money. And even in regards to what Joyce said, running those buses later in the day, and especially on weekends for people, again, that don't have transportation, they're just trying to maintain their lifestyle of having a roof over their head and being able to eat a meal every day. It's... Especially when you look at our winters, when you have someone that has to walk home from a job that ends at 9:00 at night, and they may have to walk two miles to be able to get home. That's something that we need to consider within the city if we are truly going to care for all those in need. You're talking about generations that may have lived in Fond du Lac. But we're talking about generations that come to Fond du Lac that are young, that need to get that start. And they need to have the kind of services that are going to be able to help them to proceed and even possibly to be able to grow in their own lifestyles by being able to reach farther than what they could. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the 2025 transit budget? I'll ask again. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2025 transit budget? And for a third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the 2025 transit budget? Are there any council members who wish to make any statements or questions about the 2025 transit budget at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on the transit budget. And with that, our public hearings are ended. And I realize, at the beginning of the meeting, I meant to announce that we are removing one item from our agenda. Item 5D has been removed from our agenda for tonight to be discussed at a future time. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting. A, October 9th, 2024 minutes. And B, list of claims dated October 16th, 2024. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Mr. Mullen. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. I'm an I. And that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to audience comments. Agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-agenda items to one minute and items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak? We do have a few. And we would like to start with our Girl Scout troop, 8555, who are joining us tonight. We have a few of our Girl Scouts who wish to speak.
I like the library because I like books, and I want more, especially the audiobooks.
Thank you. Do we have more Girl Scouts who wish to say anything? Come on up.
I believe that Fond du Lac is a good place.
Thank you. Aw, well, thank you for being here.
I think everyone should paint their house the color that they like.
Well, thank you for being here.
My name is Tahina, and I want more bigger slides.
Bigger slides. I heard that Tahina likes bumpy slides, right? You like the ones with bumps on them? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much to our Girl Scout troop for joining us. Thank you so much for your patience. And we have their leader here.
As one of their leaders, I would like to thank you for your grace with their fidgeting tonight. We are working on our democracy badge. So, thank you for having us.
And, girls, you are free to leave. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but you do not have to. And then, we have one other person for audience comments. We have Tanya Marco, who wishes to speak on the Advocap Opportunity Center.
Good evening. That was hard to follow, right? Thank you, city council and community members, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Tanya Marco. I am the executive director of Advocap. Advocap is a private, nonprofit, community-action agency serving low-income people in Fond du Lac, Winnebago, and Green Lake Counties. Advocap's main office is actually located just down the street here at 19 West 1st Street in Fond du Lac. I wanted to take a moment to update you on a couple of projects that we are currently working on in response to needs in our community. Currently, low-income people, including our homeless population, are being served throughout our community by many amazing nonprofit organizations along with the city and county programs. Navigating through the system of who does what can be very confusing to many people needing those services. Some individuals may not know that these services even exist. That's where we are stepping in to help. Advocap will be opening an opportunity center on November 18th, which will welcome low-income people, including our homeless population, into our building. into our building if they need assistance navigating the system, if they are interested in creating opportunities to self-sufficiency, or if they just need somewhere safe to stay during the hours of 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. We will provide safe, welcoming atmosphere to help the most vulnerable community members who are in need. We will assist them in connecting to resources that are essential in helping them move out of poverty. We will provide training and a trusting support system to guide them through these difficult times. We will invite community partners into the center to help provide much-needed services like mental health counseling, dental hygiene, life skills training, and other necessary services. Also, as some of you may have heard, AdvoCap will also be the future home of Hope on the Block's Community Pantry that is currently located at the public library. This Sunday, October 27th, that pantry will be relocated to AdvoCap's property so that our community can continue to serve those in need through this wonderful community resource. AdvoCap is your community action agency, and we are in action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes our audience comments, so now we will move on to our action items. Action item A, change of agent Class A intoxicating liquor and Class A fermented malt license, Corporation Walgreens Corp. Agent name Alyssa Brooks, doing business as Walgreens. Business address 192 North Main Street. Our introduction is by our city clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you, President Brawd. This is a standard agent change for Walgreens Class A liquor license, and background checks were done on the proposed agent, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item B, a change of agent Class A intoxicating liquor and Class A fermented malt license, Corporation QuickTrip Co., agent name Philip Rittger. Business name QuickTrip Number 486. Business address 1061 East Johnson Street. And again, our introduction is by our city clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you again, President Brawd. This is also another standard agent change for QuickTrip, Class A license. Background checks were also done on the proposed agent, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Mullin, and second by Mr. Zimmerman. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item C is Resolution Number 9147. A resolution making an appointment as a humane officer. And our introduction is by our deputy city attorney, Ms. Panagopoulos.
Thank you. The city is looking to appoint Katie McNamara as one of our humane officers. She will join our two other humane officers that city council previously appointed to assist with our animal control endeavors. So, city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey. And second by Mr. Mullin. Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, that ends our action items, and tonight we do not have any input items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Leering. And second by Mr. Zimmerman. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote. That passes unanimously. We are adjourned.